Okay, let's go ahead and have the meeting in order. If you would please stand. Yes, Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams, you'll have our invocation for us this evening.
I shall pray. Our Father who art in heaven, come tonight. Thank you for all the blessing that you have sworn upon us. Father God, we ask you to come and be with us tonight. Father God, guide us through this meeting. Father God, let everything be done for the betterment of the citizens of this community and this town. Father God, bless each and every one of us and bless the meeting that we have. Bless the people that is in charge, that we need to look toward to make this decision for us. Help us, Father God, to guide us that we do this, we can. And Father God, bless the soldiers that sit before the unconscious, that stand in the fight for freedom. Bless each and every one of them and bless those that send them there. Father God, guide them in the right direction. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Stand and standing, let's have a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have you seen it? Do we have any corrections or additions or changes to the agenda at this time?
Mayor, if I could mention a few things. Item number two, the swearing-in of Officer Stewart, we're not ready on that tonight. This paperwork has been delayed. No problem, just been delayed. I would also mention, under the consent agenda, the item on page number forty-four, we have put a note there that since this is an annual event and we've had no problems in the past, if you wanted to simply, by your approval, also allow this to be, not to have them come back year after year if the plans remain the same. So if you want to do that as part of your consent agenda motion, you can. And finally, I would remind you, there's a note at the bottom of the agenda and it'll be discussed in one of the action items, to encourage you not to adjourn tonight's meeting at the end, but to recess to a time certain relative to some refinancing.
Here in those additions, do we have any additional? Not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion second, those in favor, aye? Aye. Those opposed? Mr. Manager, we have kudos to the employees first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of items, I think you've received copies of these already separately, but I did want to mention them publicly. I got a very nice letter from the town, of the mayor for the town of Wallace, who met with us regarding our downtown revitalization successes. And Chris Johnson went and spoke to their council and a group of citizens and they wrote a very nice letter back thanking Chris for his insight and expressing their appreciation to us and admiring us for all we've been able to accomplish downtown through the efforts of a lot of people. So I want to mention that to you and to thank Chris. I don't think he's here this evening, but I did want to mention it. Secondly, and I believe you also got a copy of this, I wanted to recognize Earl Botkin and Rodney Johnson and all the Electric Division crew. You note there was a fiber optic cable break at the Department of Social Services a few weeks back and our folks were very instrumental in getting them back up and running. And DSS, their operations hinge on having those kind of capabilities and they, we were able to go out there and get them back up and running and not delay the work of that important county operation. And there's a letter from Chairman Allen Mims to you, Mr. Mayor, thanking Earl and Rodney and his crews for those efforts. And I wanted to make special mention of that.
Thank you. That is recognized and we appreciate all the good efforts from these employees, we sure do. Moving along, since item two has been amended to a future date, item three, request from interesting parties regarding the renaming of Industrial Park Drive in connection with the Smithfield Crossing project. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, there are, it has come to my attention through several conversations that there's an interest in, since the decision will rest with the town, in connection with the Smithfield Crossing project, to rename the current Industrial Park Drive to some other name that's more significant in our view. And there are several individuals here tonight, I think, that want to speak to that. And I left it open, I'm not, I know most of them, but I'm not sure who wants to take that lead or who wants to participate. But I would turn that over, turn it back to you and then you can turn it to those present tonight that may want to speak to that.
Okay. If there's anyone who'd like to speak to this item, if you'll please come forward, one at a time, and give your name and address for the Madam Clerk and we'll be glad to hear you on this request.
Where do you want me to stand?
Right there is good, Mr. Ruffin.
In naming this drive, I've given it some consideration and I'd like to go back a number of years ago, about a long time ago. There was a gentleman, and I mean a gentleman in every form of fashion, that came to Smithfield and he took a big chance, but he had the insight to recognize that the building of Highway, now we call this Interstate Highway, would be a good location for a motel. This gentleman, with his insight and his foresight, he built this motel. And it was a struggle for a number of years, as many of you, as a few of you will recall, many of you in here weren't old enough to recall. But with that insight, Dick Fleming created a wonderful opportunity, not only for the citizens of this town to participate in lodging and food there. For a number of years, and I served on a committee, a sports committee at that time in the town, he would offer those motel rooms at a discounted rate for softball teams. He had the facility not only to provide food for the players, but also had a swimming pool for the kids of the people who were participating. And the wives, he also provided a room for them and also helped them realize where they might shop in downtown Smithfield. Going on down the road from here, his dream was to build what we now call the park out here. That insight was also a huge gamble, not just a big gamble, but a huge gamble. But Dick, in his leadership, his foresight and his ability to deal with people on a one-to-one basis, made this a huge success. And many of you know, it creates a huge tax base for here in the town of Smithfield. You know, he, as I said to begin with, he was a gentleman in every form of fashion. And I think it would be only fitting that in some way we name this new road in his honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffin. Anyone else wish to speak? Come forward.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I want to go on record as excusing myself from any conversation to do with this or voting on this matter.
Your marriage is not going well, is that what it is?
So noted, Mr. Harris.
I knew this guy pretty well.
So noted.
Well, I'm afraid that like Ruffin, I'm going to go back in time too. And my first experience with Dick Fleming was with the J.C.s. I came to a J.C. convention and they had it at the Howard Johnson Hotel. And I went through downtown and I met Mr. Fleming at the time and had a wonderful experience here. I grew up in Goldsboro, I hope y'all don't hold that against me, but we always thought highly of Smithfield, a lot higher of Smithfield than Johnston, but that's another story. The thing that struck me going through town at that time, we had a wonderful community college on the right, it was very attractive even then. And then you get out there and you pass Pine Acres and that was very attractive. And then you had nothing. You had a farmland over there, I think that, I found out later, that belonged to Rachel Lefke. And then you didn't have anything going down that road until you got, I'm talking about on the road now, until you got to a ball field before you got to Savania. And everything else was vacant. When you, when a little further, you hit Selma and you had some buildup around Selma and you had a couple of little things that set back off the road, along that road, but you didn't have a connector between 301 and Industrial Park Drive like we have today. And the banking community, it would appear to me that Dick Fleming had, should have learned his lesson at Howard Johnson, but he was willing to take the risk. He had the vision, as Ruffin spoke to you, and he had the courage to step up and try to make something better for this community. If you think about the early, excuse me, late sandies, interest rates were approaching eighty percent, twenty percent, excuse me. And it was nightmarish, if you came through town, a lot of downtown was vacant. And for someone to step up and risk literally his entire fortune and well-being on a development the size and scope that he had was truly extraordinary. The, I had down here everything I knew about Dick, from his being a great sportsman and from all his hunting activities and everything that he had represented in our town and community. But the fact of the matter is, everything he touched was good. And I think everybody would say that includes his family. As part of his first pottery activity, he went over there, he planted an acre under a roof, which was unheard of in this community, and before he knew it, he had run out of room. In fact, my first involvement with Dixon, as I recall, was Dixon was saying, "We don't need, we don't need our offices over there, we need our offices somewhere else." And that became a situation where we started trying to figure out a way for those offices to be relocated so that could wind up being more space for the pottery. And as I recall, Dick, to aid that effort, donated the land that the Chamber of Commerce was then built upon, which when it was first done, part of the great hope and part of the thing the Chamber was hoping for was that there would be cash flow coming from rents from Dick. So it wasn't going to be a freebie, you know, I'll build, you know, I'll give you the land and y'all build it and I live there. Now it wasn't going to be that way. But the good news was, they grew too quickly, not even what we had forecast would have accommodated them. And so they had to go to the other side of the road and build that up. His family joined in, they got some investors then joined in, and then all of a sudden, that whole area, I think the turning point probably came when they started dealing with Ms. Lefke, but I can't, I don't know if anybody else would see it that way, that's my opinion. But they tied up that land so that the whole area could be systematically developed. The only person in this area that had the vision, had the wherewithal, the means and the willingness to accept the risk was Dick Fleming. And so because of his foresight and all the other things he brought to the table, I hope you'll join me and many of my friends in naming the Dick Fleming Road.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Your Honor, members of the council, thank you for allowing us this time. I'm not going to take much of your time, but this is not about finances, this is not about locations, but this is about a family which has impacted on not only the people in Johnston County, but thousands and thousands of people outside of our neighborhood. I first met a young gentleman when I was a little younger and I look around, I know I'm the oldest guy here tonight, but I'm not ashamed of that because I'll remind all of you who are laughing, age is just a designation of the number of years I've been here. And as long as the good Lord gives me strength and desire, I intend to use it. And that's why I'm here tonight. The basic reason I'm here is because of my concern and care for a family that has meant so much to so many people. This is not just about Dick, although he was the motivating force, he was a propelling interest in it, but his wife and these young people here tonight, his children, his family, are a part of this incentive, which is the greatest financial boost ever to come to probably eastern North Carolina, not eastern Johnston County. It is here because Dick Fleming cared. I met him and at the time I met him, he talked me into making a purchase from him, Your Honor. I was at James Wellens's law office and without having the money, but Dick told me he knew I could get it. He sold me some stock. Is it any wonder that we now have the greatest shopping center on I-95 from New York to Florida? I don't think so. I think it was destined because of a hard-working, determined family, beginning with Dick Fleming and his wife and his marvelous children. I hope that you will consider, without any hesitation, the request of this family because I personally would like to see a statue of Dick Fleming that you passed as you go in and out of this great shopping center. That would not offend me. It would make me feel proud to have known him as a friend and as a businessman. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Yates. Anyone else wish to be heard?
I'd just like to say, from my point of view, I had the privilege of knowing Mr. Fleming and Ms. Fleming and I know the children. And everything that's been said is exactly right. The word gentleman comes to mind when I hear his name. I can remember him walking down my neighborhood, which was a long way from where he lived, but he enjoyed walking and he was doing it for his health. And, you know, if he would ever see you in the yard, you could count on a conversation and it was always positive. "How are you doing? It's good to see you." You know, and he was an inspiration and a fine gentleman.
Don?
Your Honor, I can't go as far back as some of these other gentlemen ago, but...
You look like Gabby Hayes though.
Yeah, I do. I do look like Gabby Hayes. But about twenty-six and a half years ago, and I'll try to make this short, I got a call about nine-thirty-one night from this gentleman and he is a gentleman named Dick Fleming, wanted to share an opportunity in Johnston County with me that he was planning to pursue. And I said, "Well, when would you like to meet?" And he said, "How about tomorrow morning?" I was living in Wilmington at the time and he said, "How about ten o'clock?" And I said, "That'll be fine." So we set a meeting time and after we finished our two-hour meeting that morning, he said, "When can we get together in Johnston County?" Let me show you what I'm proposing for that area up there. And so I happened to be coming this way on that next Saturday. So he and I met and from the get-go that Saturday, he told me upfront, he said, "You know, some of these people out here think I'm crazy to want to do this. Some of the banks think I'm crazy to want to do this." And he said, "But I think it's going to be a good thing for this area. I think I can make it a good thing." And during the conversation, I said to him, I said, "Well, why do you really feel like you need to do it?" He said, "Well, to tell you the truth, I'm tired of taking my wife to Williamsburg, so I thought we'd build something down here and maybe we could bring all those people back to Johnston County." So anyhow, we've always had a little humor out of that, but he always, in my time with Mr. Fleming and with the family, the judge is right about that, it's a family situation. It wasn't, he was the impetus, but he had a lot of support from his family and they did a lot of work in that. It was always about, we can make this a unique shopping destination point for Johnston County if we can just kick it off the ground. And history will tell you, it's got kicked off the ground. And the first year, we had a gravel parking lot. And then finally, the second year, we were able to pave that parking lot, asphalt it. But I would urge this committee here, this council, to deep down and honor this family and specifically the parents of this family, if you need to, for the job they've done for Johnston County and the Smithfield area. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gannon. Does anyone else want to be heard? I think we pretty much know the message here. I also have letters in our behalf that I've provided to council from Mr. Larry Stansel supporting this motion, also one from Howard Johnson, the current president of the Chamber of Commerce in Cary, in supporting that. Council, y'all have heard the request. We have a...
I make a motion that we rename it whatever it's supposed to.
A second. Dick Fleming, what's the official name?
Dick Fleming Road.
Dick Fleming Road, is that...
Dick Fleming Drive Boulevard?
Boulevard.
Boulevard. Is that what you... Dixon, do you have a request in naming rights?
Dick Fleming Boulevard since King said that.
I make the motion that it be renamed Dick Fleming Boulevard. Motion and a second, those in favor, aye? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you again, family, for the request. We thank you for all Mr. Fleming did for our community. It really means a lot. Thank you a lot. Okay, we're moving on to our public hearings. Anyone wishing to be heard in these public hearings, please stand and be sworn at this time by Madam Clerk. First conditional use permit request is to allow sale of agricultural products on properties located on the south side of East Market Street, approximately eighty feet west of intersection with Fourth Street. This will be the farmer's market that we have been discussing and it will be opening up Friday. Mr. Paul?
The purpose of the farmer's market is to offer citizens of Smithfield fresh locally grown produce, flowers, honey, meats, eggs, art, and et cetera. It is also an avenue to help local farmers and producers to sell the products locally without traveling outside the county. Finally, it seems a way to boost the downtown traffic and the local economy. The farmer's market is in operation in the town of Smithfield under the Parks and Recreation Department. A farmer's market advisory committee has been appointed by the town council to help oversee the operations of the market. The proposed farmer's market will be conducted annually from April to October. The market will be open to customers every Friday between eleven a.m. and six p.m. Expected participants will be between fifteen and twenty vendors. Own street parking for customers will be available on Market Street as well as Fourth Street. Off-street parking will be available to customers and vendors in the town hall parking lot. As proposed, the farmer's market will not materially endanger the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. The farmer's market will meet all required conditions and specifications required for agricultural sales. Since the market is a once-a-week event and all tents, tables, displays are removed at the end of each day of operation, the use will not adversely affect any fiscal attributes of adjoining or abutting properties. And since the farmer's market is located on public land, it is generally commercial in nature, the downtown CBD. And since the market is seasonal in its operation, the market will be in harmony with the surrounding area. At the March third, two thousand and eleven Planning Board meeting, they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed conditional use permit for the sale of agricultural products. And might I add, Fay Robinson is here tonight and she was the person that was head of the Appearance Commission at the time that the park was originally conceived and that the farmer's market seems to be a very conducive use of the park to further the citizens of Smithfield. And the town council has requested to review the petition and make a decision in accordance with the findings for a conditional use permit for the farmer's market.
Any questions for Mr. Immler? No questions. Do I have a motion on this? Second. Motion and a second, those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Immler.
Thank you.
Our second public hearing is the rezoning petition request of .59 acre tract located on southwest corner of intersection of South Brightleaf Boulevard and East Welland Street. This will be for the Smithfield City Forest. Mr. Mark?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a rezona .59 acre tract of land from office institution to B-three highway entrance business. The property considerations locate on the southwest corner of the intersection of South Brightleaf Boulevard and East Welland Street. The property considered for rezoning has approximately one hundred and forty-five feet of linear road frontage along South Brightleaf Boulevard as well as one hundred and seventy feet of road frontage on East Welland Street. Access to the site is currently available on East Welland Street. Public water and sewer is available at the site and there are no non-flood-prone soils on the site as well. The current property owner is requesting the property to be rezoned to B-three. If the request is approved, all permitted uses in the B-three zoning district could be considered for future approvals to include retail sales and service-related businesses. The town Smithfield Comprehensive Growth Management Plan has identified this area as being suitable for residential uses. However, in the past, there have been rezonings along this corridor from residential and O-N-I to the B-three zoning district. The 301 corridor is comprised predominantly of commercials-owned properties and again, the trend for these properties have been to be rezoned to B-three. Rezoning the property to B-three will also allow for general retail uses and is compatible with the existing zoning to the north to include Carroll Pharmacy and also Food Line to the east. Rezoning the property B-three should not have any negative impacts for the community at large since adjacent zonings are currently zoned for B-three. The current zoning, O-N-I zoning district does not deny economic use of the property, but it does not allow for general commercial uses. And there are no physical constraints on the property which prevent the parcel from being developed commercially. Planning Board met and heard the case on March third of two thousand and eleven and unanimously voted to approve, recommend approval of the rezoning request. Town council tonight has requested to review the petition and make a decision on a rezoning request from office institution to B-three highway entrance business. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Any applicant is also present as well.
Any questions for Mark regarding this matter? Everyone's familiar with the location and how it's going to enhance that corner there. Well, hearing no questions, do we have a motion? Second. Motion and a second, those in favor, aye? Aye. Those opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank the owners of Smithfield City Forest for making this investment in our community. Thank you very much.
Likewise, we appreciate it, Dean. Thank you a lot. Okay, moving on to the next section of citizens' comments. Do we have anyone wishing to be heard? Please come forward and state your name and address for the clerk, please.
How are you doing? My name is Adolphus Ramon Grant. I used to stay down here, but I'm from Princeton, North Carolina, where I'm originally from. But I have been having problems with the police department out here. I had it when I stayed down here, that's why I left. I had to talk this matter with Mr. Daniel Evans, the mayor, and city council manager, Eric Williams. I still haven't had any response about it. I went up to the hospital just to see my mother, just had a pacemaker put in and I got over there and there was three police officers over there assisting some drunk, some drunk that was in the emergency room. And I just walked in, it was like about twelve, thirty, something like, I'm not really sure, but I know it was after the hour that I had to go to the emergency room for it to be buzzed through. So I goes over, I go over there, get in there and don't even pay the police, really, no mind, I'm just telling them, the ladies that are here know me because I've been doing this every night. I spent the night with my mother when she was in hospital. So I get here and I was like, "Hey, buzz me on through." "Excuse me, sir." "Yes?" "Um, I believe we got some warrants for you." "Cool." "Here's my I.D." "Your I.D.?" He tell the other officers to watch, there's two more officers right there, three of them. These two watch me, he go to the car. in there. These two watch me. He go to the car. He come back. You don't have any warrants, but I'm gonna be watching you. And throw my ID on the floor. I'm a man. I'm 41 years old, a businessman. And I tell them, man, look, I handed you that right there. How about handing it back to me? You better get that and get. That's what he told me. Cool. I been to get it. Everything is caught on tape, remind you, 'cause we at the emergency room, in the emergency room part. He take over $2,000 something dollars out of my pocket and say, I'm a drug dealer. I never get my money back. I ain't even got my ID back. Okay, this was on a Sunday night. I stayed in jail till that Monday morning. Lost my job because I was in jail. Get out. Go back to see my mom again. This was on like a Wednesday. Police, same thing. They stopped me asking for ID. I don't have my ID. Y'all got it already. What you want me to give you next? I tell them, I said, call Tommy Cho. He'll tell you the deal. He said, no, we ain't calling nobody. He said, stop resisting. How can I resist that I'm not under arrest? I told you my name. You look at my, everything is in my wallet, except my ID, 'cause y'all got that. So what I'm supposed to do next? They took me. I turn around, handcuffed me, jacked my arms up, hit me in the ear, blood pouring out my ear. I lay in Johnston County Jail for two days and two minutes script, and finally found out that I was in jail. She came down, and she says, Ramon, what's wrong? I said, my ear is still bleeding. She said, bleeding from what? I said, what the police did to me. My hands so messed up, it swells up at these random times. You feel me? It swells up at random times. I can't take no more. But like I told you, and you, and the police department, I refuse to take anymore. I like a petition to walk out in front of your courthouse. If you don't give it to me, I just go the highest I can. It don't matter, you know? I mean, that's my petition to your town. I like your town, but I don't like your police officers. And I'm not the only one having these problems. A 15-year-old boy was tased in the street. All, anytime I want to see the police officer, nowhere I go. I go to the black section over there, cross over there, by the park in Smithfield. I never see him in this neighborhood. Guess why? I have no license. They been trying to catch me driving, but they can't catch me. Guess why they don't catch me? 'Cause I'm over here. Hope God may love me. I done told them the same thing. I said, when you see that little white letters come through, it's probably about six of them now that seem different, just like mine. But see, mine ain't flashy. Mine just plain Jane. But I have no license. But I have no other choice but to drive, 'cause my mom was sick, and my dad was sick, so I drive until I can get my license. I'm working in the process now to get my license back. But that don't even matter right there by the license thing. But I refuse to take any more junk while the police. I went to prison down here. Guess why? For fighting in my own yard. But guess what? Somebody come to my house with the police. Said they come to get my ex-girlfriend's belongings. How you gonna bring another man in my house to get my ex-girlfriend belongings? I tell them, get out my yard. What the police says? Shut up and stand to the side. Really? I supposed to do that? I said, really? I was renting from him. Daniel Evans. You know, you remember. You remember what happened? I'm renting from him, just before he became the man. Told me to stand to the side. And I told him, I said, man, he's not going in the house and getting nothing from my house. And guess what my ex-girlfriend had at my house? One Nigga J and one pair of thongs. That's all I told her to bring, 'cause you don't stay here. You just come for a visit, baby. But the bottom line is, when I told them, no, 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 he can't go in my house, I grabbed this boy, punched him in my yard where I pay rent. I go to jail. Not this jail, to prison. But I'm wrong. I'm gonna bring my lawyer down. I mean, I wanted to do business with Smithfield. I got my own business. I'm a businessman. I came from a long way. I came from the gutter playboy. I used to sell drugs, but I stopped. I didn't never get caught with the drug thing, but I got smart. I don't do that no more. I'm a businessman. I try to do business with people. But Smithfield, they in Johnston County, period. You know what I found out? I found out they had a sign down here that said, welcome to KKK country. But guess what? Like I tell all the people. They might have took that sign down, but they ain't take it out of your heart, baby. It's a lot of presence right here. But from this day forth, I refuse to just be walked. Just like right now, I can walk down the road right there. You know, I mean, I want to get a video camera and walk right with me. Know what they gonna do? I could stop at least three times walking down the road right now. Guess what? I got on black. And plus, I'm black. That's what I feel. But I feel it's just racial, man. I mean, you might think I'm being hostile, but you be hostile too if you done been beat up for no reason, kind of go see your moms. Told me I won't go and see a git. And even the people at the emergency room told the same story. Ramon didn't do anything. But I ain't heard from nobody talking about nothing yet, but Ramon, well, you are kind of hostile. You would be hostile too. That's why I left here. I left here at 15, right away from here. Didn't want to come back. My mom got dead. You know, they get older, you get sick, so I'm back. But when they die, man, I don't never want to come back here no more. I hope I ain't too hostile, but I'm out of here. My phone keep ringing.
Thank you, Ramon. Have a good evening. Anyone else under citizens' comments? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll move to the new business. Item number one, ordinance amendment, chapter four for animals. Mr. Williams?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there's an action form attached, which I trust is self-explanatory, and it outlines our current situation with respect to animal control and the desire to reestablish that, at least at a fairly acceptable and minimal level. And it does require a couple of ordinance changes. The current ordinance makes reference to the chief of police, and what I would like to do is amend that to say the, have that responsibility rest with the city manager and/or his or her designee. And then that would give me the administrative ability to reorganize that effort and reestablish that program again at some minimally acceptable level, because now we don't have that, and it's a problem that exists and continues to increase on a daily basis. So the action form, I hope, is self-explanatory. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Williams? Do I have a motion on the amending of the chapter four?
Motion.
Motion second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The second revision will be to the council protocol for certain agenda items. This will be for the, regarding the bid and awarding of the bids.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be happy to defer to any of my council colleagues. However, that action item is self-explanatory as well. The council did adopt some protocols a number of years ago, and I have been advised about what prompted the development of those procedures. And I think I would applaud you for doing that at that time. There was some language in it that was causing, at least on the staff level, a little bit of concern, because when you have a council policy, we want to adhere to that just as carefully as we can. And so I have gotten together with the original crafter of those protocols, and I think we're both in agreement, and would suggest that the policy that's in front of you, and I think the revised language is in bold and red type. And if you will approve that, I will be sure it's distributed to the staff, and we will adhere to it very, very carefully.
Basically, what was done, he defined some positions to make it somewhat clearer as to what to do. There was, in several cases, nothing was changed. Then it got down to some time limits that were adjusted so that we could, the whole idea behind all of them is to have the council information prior to the meeting that we can look at. And some of them have a little longer time period, but it's basically the same time period. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt these revisions and...
We have a motion. We have a second. Second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Suggested revisions are amended. Number three, bid award for sewer line rehab in South Smithfield. Mr. Earl?
In the spring of 2010, the town received a grant to do a sewer evaluation study in the South Smithfield area. That study did identify several locations within that area that, where we were getting some serious stormwater infiltration. The study not only located, determined those locations, it also put them in priority as far as repair. Couple months ago, staff and I looked at those locations and picked three that would, that should fit within the money that was allocated by the council for this year's budget. There's $100,000 for I and I sewer rehab. And these three locations, we felt like would fit very well into that money that was appropriated. Those areas are Wilson and Brightleaf at that intersection, Heath Avenue, and On Underwood. The method that we'll be using, and I did include that in the, or some description in the packet, is slip lining. And slip lining is, I mean, it's not a, it's nothing new. It's not radical. I mean, it's done all the time. In fact, I think Johnston County just did some slip lining a couple of years ago. They've done it since I've been here. But Smithfield has never done it. Talk to Danny Baker, the water sewer superintendent, and he doesn't recall us ever doing that type of work in Smithfield. But it should do, it should do the job. We received some companies from the Wood Company that has done this, and we sent, we sent out four bids, four requests, and received three. The low bidder was Reynolds Inliner. I think they're out of Charlotte. Their low bid was $53,634. If they are awarded the bid, if the council sees fit to award the bid, they can start sometime in mid-May, and it'll probably take about two weeks to finish the job. The bids are well within the appropriated amount. We appropriated $100,000, but the bids came back much, much less. And it's my recommendation to the council to accept this contract and allow this project to go forward.
Okay. Any questions for Earl on this?
I noticed that since it came in under bid, and that is a very good sign or expectations. Are there any other plans to do any more work than this this year?
We, there was one more area that we could have done, and based on our estimate, it's gonna be about $40,000. But we elected not to pursue any more at this time. I think this will get started. These three projects, we can get better at.
That's good.
Earl, just for information, can you give us an idea of how long the lining repair should hold up?
The information that I've received, that the lining is good for about 50 years. And, you know, that's, that's pretty good. And it's done, I mean, it's done all over the nation, so it's a good, it's a good method.
I know that I used to live on Wilson Street back in the 70s, and there was some work done. Sewer line was always a problem down there. And they did some work, but I don't think it was anything like this. Probably wasn't even used then. But yeah, it definitely. Wilson Street definitely does, yeah.
It's not invasive. I mean, it's just no digging or anything. It's a good, it's a good method.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion in a second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have something I want to bring up about something, a situation in my district. Do I need to do that under new business, or I need to do that?
Yes, sir. We'll put that as a number eight item, and we'll just add that. So just remind me when we get to that. Mr. Harris, if you would. Item four, bid award for financing contract for miscellaneous equipment purchasing. Mr. Justin Merrick?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Page 58 of your agenda packet is the town council action forum for financing several items that we had budgeted through this prior, or this current year's budget. The total is $133,000. And the proposed financing arrangement will be for three years. And the winning bid was First Citizens Bank, and it is a standard 168-20 installment purchase financing with a rate of 2.04% for that term of three years. That is a fixed rate. And you can see on page 59, the tabulation of the other proposals. But First Citizens was well below. So that is what we are requesting, and if you have any questions, I'll answer that.
Any questions for Mr. Merrick on this refinancing award? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second. Motion in a second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Justin. Bid award for exhaust removal systems for the fire MS station. Chief Harris?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. If you'll remember, during our budget process this year, we discussed the exhaust removal system, and we sought a grant through the Assistance to Firefighter Grant Program through Federal Emergency Management Agency. And we were successful in obtaining a 90% grant in order to perform this work. What we're doing tonight is, we had hoped to have a bid package for you to award tonight, but because this is a fairly specialized process, there's not a lot of companies out there that do this. So we solicited bids through five different companies. We had scheduled a bid opening date of March 21, and we had hoped to have a bid for you to award tonight. And it ties back into the finance package that you just approved. That's the $10,000 grant match that the town would put up for this. What I'm asking you for this evening is, we have rescheduled, as in accordance with the standard bid process, we have solicited bids a second time, and we will, that will be beginning March 30. And of course, we'll have another bid opening of April 11. And at that time, if we only receive the two bids, then we'll be allowed to select the lowest bid. What we're asking for you to do this evening, and it's a little out of the ordinary, because our grant funds have to be secured by the end of April, it will not give us an opportunity to come back to the May meeting to have this awarded. So what we're asking for is for the town, the board to authorize town staff to administratively award this bid as long as it falls within the accepted and current budgeted guidelines. And I'll certainly answer any questions that you have concerning that.
Any questions for Chief on that exception?
What is the, on this refinancing that we just approved, there's a station exhaust system, $11,000. Is that the same thing you're asking for?
Yes, sir. That's our matching portion of the federal grant. It's about $100,000 project. We're able to obtain $90,000 through federal grant, and our match would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,000.
Okay. What is the feeling of the council?
I make a motion to approve that.
Motion in a second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Chief?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Item six, bid award for 2010-11 street resurfacing project. Mr. Branch?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Manager Williams, town council. 2010-11 street resurfacing project consists of 20 streets. One of the streets being milled down an inch and a half below the gutter line. The 20 streets is a total of two miles of city streets that will receive an inch and a half overlay. A list of these streets are accompanied or attached to this action form on page 66. Those streets were basically from using the 2006 condition, street condition survey that you guys approved. That is a method to choose the actual streets that we pave, and that's the streets that were actually chosen. Eleven bid packets were sent out to licensed contractors. Four of the bids were returned. Barn Hill Contracting Company came in as the lowest bid at $299,894.64. The bids went only down to Ray Contract at $377,167. A total budget amount of this project was $400,000. The projected amount of this project is under budget $100,105.36. Being under budget, staff measured the entranceway to the community park for a possibility to add the filling roadway to this project. 486 square yards of full-deck patching is required to bring this road, this entranceway up to street. A lot of the problem with the entranceway to the community park is inadequate preparation of the base that was put down before the road was put in. And it's staff's, staff's thinking that if we don't go in and do something to this entranceway now, I've been monitoring it for two years, if we don't do something now, we're gonna start seeing the actual curbing gutter fill. There's a lot of areas out there that need attention, and it's our, it's our recommendation to add that to the contract. So action requested, the council's requested to award the bid to Barn Hill Contracting Company for the amount of $337,316.64. This recommendation is adding the community park entranceway to the 20th Street pavement. I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Benny, do you know if the county would be responsible for a portion of this, the school system?
Sir?
Do you know if the schools, Board of Education would be responsible?
Do you know if the schools, Board of Education would be responsible for any part of it or not?
No, sir.
Would not?
No, sir.
But we can't get anything out of this?
I wish we could. I wish we could.
Any other questions, Mr. Branch?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion in a second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Item seven, refunding of nineteen ninety-seven general obligation stormwater bonds, Mr. Williams?
Just while, while Justin's walking up, just a little prelude. We are looking, as you well know, to restrain expenditures and as much as we can as we move into a very difficult budget year. And we, as you know, we have a financial advisor onboard, Janice Burke, who used to head up the Local Government Commission, and also bond counsel. And Justin and Mr. Apparanz are bond counsel, and Ms. Burke and I and her associate have been looking for possibilities, and this is one that's out there. We propose that you refinance some earlier general obligation bonds issued for stormwater improvements at what we believe will be a much better interest rate than you currently have. And I'm going to let Justin go through the analysis. We will have a more detailed analysis at a subsequent meeting, but we want to tell you what led us to this, this action, and I think you'll find it very attractive. And with that introduction, I'll pass it along to Justin.
Like Mr. Williams said, we are trying to leave no stone unturned and trying to find ways to save money, not only in this budget, but the upcoming budget. And with that in mind, we did look at the debt that has been issued, and it appears that we have good interest rates on most of our debt. This being the one with the highest interest rate, it was five point two percent, and they were issued in nineteen ninety-seven, it was stormwater general obligation bonds. When we looked at this, we discovered that right now, if we were to take these to market, we could probably get an interest rate of around two point seven percent, just based on market transactions that have occurred recently. This is one of the easier things, again, that we can do to try to save some money. It's not, it's not a ton of money, but it's fifty-one thousand dollars, almost fifty-two thousand dollars over the term of the, of the remaining term of the bonds. And we are not going to change the term of the bonds, so they will be paid off in the same amount of time they would have been previously. So it's not like we're lengthening the payback term or anything like that. We are just trying to achieve a reduced interest rate. So this is, this is not any playing with figures or anything like that. This is a true reduction in interest rate, just because of where the markets are at this point in time. If you wanted to look on page seventy-two as a part of the analysis that was done by our, our financial advisor, you will see the prior debt service, the refunding debt service, and savings, and then an annual savings there at the side. And you'll see, the way this is restructured, there will be, the savings are essentially pushed up to the front, which will be within your two thousand and twelve budget year, which is the upcoming budget year. There are two reasons for this. One, the Local Government Commission likes to see the savings come up front. The second being, we feel that this upcoming budget will hopefully be the bottom of the decline, and hopefully, we're going to see an upturn soon. So this will provide us a little bit of, I guess, leverage or freedom within the next year's budget as we try to do that and complete some, at least one more project that we've got on the table right now. So like I said, when we come back on the, on the twenty-first, if you choose to move forward, we will have the bids in hand. So this two point seven will either be solidified, or it will change. And RFP is out right now to banks, just to give us their proposals on what they, what they would offer. But two point seven, like I said, is what we expect. It could vary, it could drop, it could increase just a little bit. We'll have a new, a new analysis for you on that night. But that is the general framework we're going to operate in, is to just try and save a little bit of money on the remainder of this outstanding debt. I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Justin on this?
We got any other possibilities with other debt?
We are looking at, at one other option. It is regarding the Aquatic Center and that debt. Right now, it's a little too early to tell which route we're going to take. But other than that, the good news is, we have great interest rates. The bad news is, they are what they are. We can achieve better interest rates than what we've got on most of our debt.
I think this is a prudent move on refinancing, we'll take advantage of the rates, is my opinion on that, so. Do we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, what I would ask you to do, if you would, you really don't have to, since we don't have the actual bids in hand yet, they, I think the RFP went out yesterday to the banks. And the reason for the, the timing is critical because of the time we have to go back to the LGC and how long banks will hold their interest rates. The only decision you need to make tonight, if you think this is a prudent move forward, is to, as I've indicated earlier, not to adjourn tonight's meeting, but to recess to a time certain. And at that meeting, or prior to it, we will get the results of the bank bids back to you, and you can see the amortization schedules. And what we'd suggest is that you recess until April twenty-first, which is a Thursday, if I am remembering my calendar correctly. We stayed away from Wednesday because Wednesday is typically a bad day, and you simply have to state the time. And we're going to suggest, again, I know we've all got tough schedules, but sometime I would suggest in the, in the early to mid-evening, as long as we have a quorum there, that's really the only thing you need to do tonight. There's some more information that will be provided to you prior to that meeting, and we'll have Ms. Burke, will be at that meeting to help, help go through the details of this.
Your original request is seven p.m.
We threw that out there as a, as a suggestion. It kind of depends on the schedule of the council. Perhaps the earlier, the better, but again, that's totally up to you. We just need a time, we need to recess, don't adjourn tonight's meeting, but recess to a time certain, and that, that allows us to not renotice the meeting and re-advertise, and is just a more efficient way to handle that. So just picking the time and that date is really all you need to do tonight. And we're open to-
That time and date sufficient to the council?
When is it?
Again, the twenty-first of-
Thursday, April twenty-first, and whatever time the council-
Well, that's two weeks from now. I don't know where I'm going to be. Sounds good to me.
We can do it earlier if you like, if that's more accommodating to you, it doesn't-
Yeah.
Seven o'clock.
All you need is more. How do we put it with the staff?
The staff's here to serve. It's, it's, you'll have to take some specific actions that night, but we can deal with whatever time you choose on that. It needs to be that evening.
I'm hearing a consensus that that be the case.
Seven o'clock.
Recession till that time on this item.
Very good, thank you.
We don't, we don't need a motion or anything right now.
Well, you might, no, not, um-
We're good at that, we can do it for you.
You're good. You're all right. Just don't adjourn tonight's meeting at the very end.
Mr. Harris, you wanted to be heard on item eight?
I did. I have a question over in my district on Vermont Street, has come to my attention by several of the citizens in that area. We have a house on Vermont that is directly across from the primary school, South Smithfield, that at some point in the recent future, within the past year, I don't know the exact figure, Chief Harris may know, but it caught on fire. And that dwelling, based on some conversation I have, perhaps has been condemned, and it has been sitting there. I've had a couple of the citizens that live in that area complain to me about that situation, also about due to the fire, there's some issues with smell, there's also some safety issues that they have to do with that, and I'm asking, I'm asking, what I'm asking is the city to advise me what has been done, or where we stand on that piece of property there on Vermont across from the school, as to what, what we have done to satisfy our obligation, and what can be done to speed that along, if anything.
Mr. Emble, I know you've got some knowledge of it, you and I have spoken about this topic before, so why don't you share with the council?
Basically, after the fire, there was some issues in regards to the insurance claim as well as the mortgage on the house. It took a while to resolve that. One of the parents of the gentleman that owned the house has interceded on his son's behalf, and the house is now been paid off by the fire insurance. This just happened as of last week. I've spoke with his attorney. He had to engage an attorney to resolve the issue. The mortgage has been paid off. There will be a clean, clean title delivered within thirty days, excuse me, within sixty days. And the owner, father, is going to take the house down in short order. So the house will be coming down. But there were some insurance claim issues associated with it, and therefore, there was no action being taken forth because no one actually claimed title to it.
It concerns me a little bit because I saw for sale sign in front of it today. When I, in fact, when I drove to this meeting, there's a for sale by owner sign in front of it, and is that just an old sign, or?
No, sir, that was just put up last Friday. The gentleman that is handling this for his son is trying to recover his costs. As I said, he's engaged an attorney out. If anybody is interested in purchasing the house and tearing it down, it is for sale, but it is condemned, and the house will have to come down. If he, as soon as he gets clear title, it's his intention to take the house down.
Your phrase was, I don't remember exactly what your phrase was, it was in the foreseeable future. What is that, what is that timetable? I mean, when can we, what can I tell these citizens as to when the city will act on this if the owner doesn't?
The city would have to start a condemnation process, and the town attorney could advise you on that, but generally, our experience has been in the past, we're talking several months if we go through the condemnation process to do that. I do feel that with the owner, the house will come down in short order. And I would say if we don't see it down within about thirty to forty-five days, we will need to take some action. Town attorney has been in touch with the owner's attorney, so we are working on that.
Okay. Bob, is it your information that you feel will have some resolve on this, pretty quickly?
Well, we, we insisted him in getting a bid on taking down the house. He got a, they called me about it last week, and we listed him on getting the bid to take down the house, and the bid was sent to his attorney who got it in London, okay? If he hadn't been out of town, would have gotten it sooner. So I did not know the response to that, but obviously, I think the appropriate response is the town, the house either comes down, or we enforce the statutes. And there's clear remedies there, it's just a matter of whether we want to enforce it.
I think it's prudent that the staff stay on top of it and make sure that we, make sure the compliance is there.
I would agree. I would think that we obviously need to work with this landowner to the best of our ability, but in the same breath, you know, in short order, to me, means thirty to sixty days. And what I don't want is that issues with those citizens living around that house continuing to have the, in particular, with the summer coming on and the warmer months, it's going to, there's going to be more of an issue with odor and some of the other things that I've heard. So I would ask staff to, to be prompt and work with them, but to be forceful.
I'll follow up and get back with you on that, council, as far as their schedule. I'll contact the attorney and the owner tomorrow and see where they're going with it.
And what I suggest we do maybe is just to keep it on the front burner. We can put it under, if thirty to forty-five days is reasonable, then you meet in about another thirty days, we can put it back on the agenda and see, bring you up to date if it's-
I'd like to see that on the agenda, Paul, for the follow-up.
Sure.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Harris. Moving to the mayor's report, I'll be very brief. I do want to bring you back up to steam on some conversation we had earlier. Last month, we talked about the House Bill one seventeen that Mr. Daltry had introduced about the electrical transfers. We had a group of mayors, as well as city managers and councilmen that went to Raleigh regarding this bill and how it would be detrimental to the cities, at least we felt. The committee put it to a subcommittee, and it's my understanding that it will probably stay in subcommittee at this particular point, that it will not come out of subcommittee through conversation. So at this point, we feel very confident that, you know, it's in the right place, if you will. Also, today, the manager and I attended the Eastern Mayors Association, and there was probably, gracious of House, we'll take forty or so mayors from eastern North Carolina, city managers and staff, very good meeting. It was with Electric Cities was our meeting, discussing the merger between Progress Energy and Duke, as well as what roles we as mayors and Electric Cities would play in that merger. There are some other communities, for the city of New Bern, for example, who is elected to go out on their own and hire a consultant, as well as an attorney with the, what's called a FRAC attorney, or the Federal Energy, is that how you say it?
Federal Energy Regulatory Commission.
Regulatory Commission attorney, if you will, to help negotiate their findings or their feelings on this merger. They had requested that other cities join if we'd like to, to help with that effort. That's something I'll get more information to this council on later in more detail. But just to let you know, the meeting went very well. Graham Edwards with Electric Cities has gave us four or five points of negotiations that we're trying to do with the Progress Energy, and some of which I think will relieve some electric rates in the future. So we'll keep our fingers crossed on that, and I'll keep you apprised of that information. But a lot of good information today. Just as another reminder, we have a big event on Friday. We have the farmer's market that'll be opening up. I'd like to see all the council there if they can to support this, if you're available. We'll start with music and festivities around eleven, is that right, Mr. Johnson? And then we'll have a ribbon cutting at twelve o'clock, with state agricultural folks will be here and some other dignitaries, and we appreciate y'all supporting that. I've heard nothing but positive on this, and I think it's going to be a great event. So that concludes my report. Mr. Manager, you have some follow-ups on the manager's report?
Just very quickly, Mr. Mayor, as you recall, Ms. Barbara attended a meeting, I don't, can't recall if it was the last meeting or not, but regarding the unimproved street in the vicinity of her, her home off Barber Road. And I have, Mr. Branch and I have met with Ms. Barbara on at least two or three occasions, perhaps. And this matter has been before the council. We searched the records, it came before the council on, in August of two thousand and one, and August of two thousand and eight. And it was determined at that time that, that it is an unimproved, it's an existing but unimproved and unaccepted street.
It's a cartway.
Correct. And there have, there's been some, according to Ms. Barbara, there's been, there have been letters submitted and petitions. We simply cannot find any. Normally, what occurs is if there's an unimproved street, the residents that abut it have the opportunity to petition the council to make improvements, and it's not absolutely mandatory, but typically, there's an assessment role, I mean, there's a whole process regarding determining the cost, assessing those costs against the abutting property owners, and spreading that assessment out over a certain number of years. We can't find any evidence that that ever occurred. The record seems to suggest that. I do, Mr. Branch and I will continue to meet with Ms. Barbara to see if we can solve the issues related to sanitation service along that portion that is not a public street. And we haven't concluded those discussions yet, but we are working on the issue that she brought to the council, and simply don't have a resolution other than to say that there has been no action that I can find where the council has gone through the process of formally accepting the street and then coming up with a, with a plan to assess the abutting property owners for the cost of improvements. It just, the record does not, does not exist that I can find, or that we've been able to find. I'll continue to keep this on the front burner because I, there is some concern, but it's, I don't have a solution for it at the moment. Also wanted to mention very briefly, the League Regional Meeting is in Goldsboro, it's several different places. The one closest to us is in Goldsboro this coming Wednesday. I intend to go, it's in the afternoon, and normally, I might pass, but with the legislature in session and so many issues up in the air like annexation and the House Bill one seventeen the mayor mentioned, and a host of issues, I do want to get the very latest status of that legislation because it could affect us greatly, particularly the matter related annexation. You all, you're aware of what these issues- what these issues are in the, in the, uh, uh, what's at stake, and Mr., I'll be happy to defer to the mayor, Mr. Moore, or anybody else. Uh, thirdly, the, um, I would remind you, the transportation, you had a presentation at your last meeting, I believe, by two representatives from, uh, NCDOT regarding the comprehensive, comprehensive transportation plan for Johnston County, but also as it affects Smithfield, and there are what they call, uh, drop-in sessions that are planned, and the one, uh, nearest and, and most easiest for us to, to attend is, uh, at the Agricultural Building on Tuesday, May third, from four to seven. That happens to be, I believe that's, uh, that's one of your regular meetings, but if you want the opportunity to, to look at what's being proposed and walk around and make comments in perhaps more detail than you had the opportunity at the last meeting, I would encourage you to do that. And it, again, it's, uh, Tuesday, May third, from four to seven at the Ag Center. Town Hall Day is Wednesday, May fourth, at the Quorum Center. Again, I'm not sure who are, may, who are, may not be registered, but again, that's an opportunity to, uh, lobby with, with our legislative delegation about issues that concern the, uh, uh, cities and towns, including Smithfield. And, uh, there are two briefings during the course of the day, there's one in the morning, one in the early morning and one in mid-morning, I can't recall the exact schedule, but, uh, again, the lobbying needs to be an ongoing effort, it just can't be a town hall day, but I would remind you of that. And finally, the annual ham and yam festival is set for May seventh and eighth. I see Chris Johnson in the audience, I don't know whether there's any late-breaking news, but I think all the plans are coming together, and, uh, that's a, that's a, uh, a great event, and it seems to grow from year to year, so I would encourage you to put that on your calendar. That's all I have. Oh, and, and finally, again, I want to encourage you, if you will not adjourn tonight's meeting, and simply recess until Thir- when you get to that point, until Thursday, April twenty-first, at seven P.M. in these chambers.
Do we have anything else for the common good? Hearing none, do I have a motion that we recess until the twenty-first and seven?
Second.
Motion and a second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, we are in recess. Thank you, John.